Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Webster Board of Education June 3 business meeting. Would you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you very much. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion, please, to move out of executive session? Mike, in a second. Linda, all in favor? Okay, thank you. The end of the year is fast approaching, including the signature events that celebrate students and their accomplishments. We certainly hope that we don't experience another year as challenging as this one was. However, we also know that because of all that we have learned and experienced, the guidance from school district governing bodies will be more informed and we will have clearer lines of communication. We expect guidance to be forthcoming that will inform instruction in the fall and any protocols. As we're speaking right now, there's advocacy around local control should a pandemic or other type of medical emergency occur. We will share this with the community as soon as we're informed. We would like to extend our sincere gratitude to all members of this district and those who worked through the challenges of this year and stayed focused on our common priority, our students. Moving on to the public, well, I'm sorry, the liaisons to the board first. So we have a couple of special guests. If you'd like to come forward to the table and address the board.
Student liaison.
Amy. Yep.
Brooke, I think it's Brooke and Michael.
Brooke and Michael, if you'd like to announce your name, our two liaisons from Schrader High School, in person for the last meeting of the year. We're very glad to have you. Thank you.
So I'm Brooke. So our first news comes from Ms. Henry, one of our guidance counselors, announcing that one of our students, Larissa Mitchell, was encouraged by her EMCC teachers to apply for and was accepted into the New York State Summer School of Arts Program. Typically, it's a six-week summer program that's held at an actual college, but this year it's fully virtual, but it's quite an honor to be accepted. We also have some news from Mrs. Woodward, one of our English teachers, sharing that the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame legend Steven Van Zant is visiting her 10th grade remote class on June 8th to witness the work they are doing with the lessons from his organization, Teach Rock, and it's part of the Rock and Roll Forever Foundation. And also, we have news from Scott Lasky, one of our technology teachers, that 13 of his students in their transportation systems class passed the New York State Safe Boating Course and earned their boater safety certificate.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michael Riddell. So we have a report from Mr. Waltman, who's a social studies teacher. Congressman Morelli did a Zoom call with his economics classes, and they discussed investing in markets, and they had that as a culminating activity for participating in the National Stock Market Challenge. The team actually finished 102nd out of 2,000 teams, so they did quite well this year. A report from Mr. Claire, who's one of our guidance counselors at Schrader, is that about a week ago, a couple of seniors, well, I shouldn't say a couple, all of our seniors, posted their destinations after high school on the board in the cafeteria, and it showed where they were going to college. A couple of our students are even going into the armed forces, into the Navy, into the Marine Corps, and into the Air Force as well. The colleges were very diverse this year. Some are staying right here locally in Rochester, and then others are going down south and then out west. And then finally, a report from our student governments, we're having our prom and ball tomorrow and Saturday, which we're super excited about. Even though we have obviously limitations this year, we're super excited that we can have it, and it's going to be in our courtyard. We're going to have a DJ, a photo booth, and it's going to be just as good, hopefully, as any normal prom or ball would be. So that's it for us. Thank you. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you both. You can leave it right there. We've heard from you via Zoom links this year, and it's certainly much better to be in person. We appreciate that you took your time to be here and spend it with us. Thanks again. And welcome, Amy, from Webster Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Colley, and I am the student board liaison from Webster Thomas High School. As the end of the year is quickly approaching, there are countless things happening in our Thomas building. Many of our seniors are currently at Camp Corey for their senior trip. Last week was the senior breakfast, where students were invited to share one of their final meals together as a class, pick up their yearbooks, and ball tickets. Senior Ball is Saturday, June 12, and just one week and a half later, we'll be gearing up for graduation on the 24th. We are so proud of our 29 Thomas students who were recently inducted into the American Chemical Society. Their hard work and dedication has not gone unnoticed, and we are excited to celebrate with them. Last Wednesday, a select group of 9th through 11th graders were honored at our annual Titan Scholar Awards ceremony. On Wednesday, our Dream Club and their advisors participated in the Rock to Change Summit. This group of students and staff focused on our Thomas culture and how we can make improvements so that everyone feels like they're a part of the Titan family. Thursday, we held our fifth annual Shakespeare competition, to which Thomas Sr. Nathan McGaw took first place. On June 17, 18, and 19, some of our students will be performing in cabaret, which will be shown in the Penfield Amphitheater, and if you're interested, tickets can be purchased online. Huge congratulations to all of these awesome students, and good luck to those getting ready to perform. Now transitioning into sports, our boys' track team has been on fire this season and continues to defend their six-year streak of being undefeated. Our boys' lacrosse team is also undefeated this season, coming out of a win against Canandaigua last week. A close game played out between our Thomas and Schrader girls' lacrosse teams, with Thomas finishing up on top with a 14-12 win. Our boys' golf team season has come to a close, finishing with a three-way tie for divisional champions. Next week, we will be holding a signing day for our Division I and Division II committed athletes, and I'm proud to say I'll be one of the students signing in that. As the remainder of our spring sports wind down, we are encouraged by all of our student athletes' constant dedication to not just their sport, but also to their schoolwork. Now, if the board allows, I would like just one minute more, as this is my last board meeting of my high school career, and I have some final thoughts. In 9th grade, I was selected to present to you all. I remember feeling a variety of emotions, nervousness about speaking in front of a group, uncertain why I was selected over someone else with more experience, but I was excited for the opportunity to represent our Thomas student body. These last four years, I have undoubtedly grown so much as a person within this role. I gained experience in speech writing and delivery, and received insight into the inner workings of a school district. I'm excited to announce that in the fall of 2021, I will be making the 18-hour drive to Midling University in Fremont, Nebraska. I'll be studying business and digital marketing, and I've been blessed with a scholarship to go compete on their shotgun team. As this chapter of life comes to a close, I'd like to thank you all for what you've done for me these last four years. Leaving is bittersweet, but I can assure you that charisma and Lauren will continue to represent Thomas High School well. Thank you again, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Amy, it is us that have a thank you for you. You've spent many evenings, and you've done such a thorough and amazing job to represent Webster Thomas High School. We wish you well in the future. We know you're here with your parents, and I'm sure they are just beaming with pride at all you've accomplished. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy, Michael, and Brooke. It is so great to hear student voices here again in person. So thank you guys so much.
Hi, welcome, Joan. So good to see you. Thank you for being here.
Wonderful to see you guys in person. It's wonderful. It's going to be hard to follow Amy and Brooke and Michael, but I am going to try to tell you about all the things WTA has been doing. I could be here for hours. You guys know I could be here for days, and it wouldn't be done. We have over 800 members who are working so, so hard. Our 1211 programs, wow, they rocked it. Catherine Goodman has been recognized not only by her peers for all this amazing positivity she brings to schools and her classroom, but she put together a videotape with her students and their lyrics. How cool, brave. Noble Armstrong focused on some serious vocational technology programs that can be done here at our schools and working with our students. So to all of them, thank you. Members recognize them and really do admire working with them. Our elementary schools, they continue to think outside the box. We have librarians reading virtual during lunchtime to give students and teachers a moment to breathe, to eat, and have fun. Our state road music teacher, Stephanie Jones, she's worked with interviewing even as young as first graders, working with different people in the building and getting to know their musical likes and dislikes and the cultural, really, what is out there and what pieces are doing by all staff in the building. Our WTA members and student councils at every level across the district have been working tirelessly. That's not unusual. That's usual. They continue to weave in fun bonding experiences with COVID-friendly guidelines and more and more opportunities, as these wonderful liaisons have highlighted, are being able to happen. Proms, balls, field days, spirit weeks, celebrations, sports, they're getting it in before the school year ends. Planning is not only done in our schools, it's never been confined to the four walls of a classroom or a building. However, COVID brought new ways for WTA members to break through barriers, to overcome obstacles, and to plan for success, to have students learning right from March 13 of 2020 through today, through tomorrow, and through all of Webster. WTA members at willing, part that they have their students laughing at them, because literacy teachers and librarians have been nerding out, as the kids call it, on projects. And they are so excited by what is being done regardless of the pandemic and the learning, the thinking, the questions, the projects. It doesn't stop there. UN Model UN continued at Schrader, and they were as proud as proud could be to have students not only talking about pandemic, but those UN topics that are hard, that exist, human trafficking, drugs, the things that are going on in this world that did not stop because of pandemic head. And kids are learning and learning to speak up and looking at them from different angles and learning to write speeches. Yes, yes, and deliver those speeches. So kudos to all of those teachers. Parents at Thomas are recognizing the work of our WTA teachers, especially people like Eric Thurlie and others among them, who are constantly sending out remind, whether it's text or classroom or the remind system, and finding those ways to reach kids while balancing helping them grow, be responsible, be independent during a pandemic. Remote WTA rocks, literally. They mentioned Susan Woodward. She is the one who has been chosen, and next week, there will be a guest speaker during her virtual classes. I could go on about those remote teachers. You know that. They did an incredible job trying to figure out how to navigate through this. I get logged off Google Meets. I could not do it. WTA members, they're amazing collaborators. Schrader Library, 12 new projects, 12 new projects on top of what they've been doing. And one of those projects has been called, Can Civil Engagement Happen Outside the Neighborhood of Make-Believe? It's been accepted, and it will be showcased at the 101st Council of Social Studies that will be held in November of 2021. Sports, coaches, arts, music, wow. They floor me, the way they concerts outside, inside, wherever they can get kids engaged, doing and as many people there as possible and safe. And they continue. There are coaches, you guys know it. They, where fall coaches find themselves in the spring, and they're coaching in the spring as well. They're having practice back to back. There was a beautiful thank you written in conjunction, in partnership with our PTSA that WTA received. Touching email was sent to all members sharing. Families, program coordinators, administrators, and community members have been given such loving heartfelt feedback and appreciation of WTA members all month long at PTSA meetings. Families specifically are so appreciative and touched by the WTA members across all 11 buildings who signed up to surprise seniors, and it is continuing going on right now with their own graduation baskets. Some of the members have signed up to celebrate and celebrate multiple seniors, and at least one person for the second year in a row has taken five seniors. It has brought tears to the eyes of many to see their elementary school and middle school teachers show, as well as their high school, loved children, still how loved their children are and how they remained in the hearts of all WTA members. The Luminary Walk is another way. We are in conjunction and partnership with our PTSA. Oak Tree, I congratulate you, and I know you will hear in detail about wonderful winners we have this year. Retirees, we had a mobile follow-through last year. We're going to bring them back this year, and we're celebrating together. Cannot wait. Sue Casey, Mike Saffaletto, our best to you. Thank you for all your time. Shannon, Jennifer, congratulations, and we wish you luck. A huge thank you again to all WT members who swore my email with many things schools are doing. It's an honor to be the liaison and share with you, the board, the things going on in this district. Together, we're strong, and we wish you health, kindness, peace, and love.
Thank you so much, Joan. We've appreciated your time and all the effort that it takes to coalesce from 11 buildings, all the activities that are going on, and we really appreciate your time in doing that. Thank you. Moving on to our moving on to the public comment portion, we will honor the amendment to our policy for the remainder of this year. We appreciate the comments of the community and believe every individual that speaks has a vested interest in the education of our students. Your comments are important to us. Concerns raised will be referred to the district administration for follow-up or action where appropriate. The board will not be responding to comments during this session, but please be assured that we are listening. Finally, we ask individuals during their speaking time to model the conduct we expect from our students and school daily. Please be respectful of others in your words, conduct, and demeanor. We will observe the three-minute time limit this evening because we have a very full agenda. I do understand there's an additional person wishing to speak at the end, and that's absolutely fine. Now, I'll turn it over to Cindy, who will introduce the speakers. You can please come forward and have a seat at one of the microphones at the table and announce your name before you start speaking. Thank you. First is Laura Dwellaby. Next is Jennifer Funseka.
First of all, is this on? Yeah. First of all, excellent speaking.
Oh, thank you.
That was great, as well as from the Schrader. My name is Jennifer Funseka. It was Winston Churchill who is accredited with this quote, "Courage is rightfully considered the foremost of virtues, for upon all others depend, and it is with courage that I and others tonight are attending this meeting and addressing the board and community about crucial and critical information." In an interview this week, Lieutenant Governor Mark Robinson of North Carolina said, "Critical race theory is being used not only against our students, but also our teachers." If you take CRT as it is applied now and take some of the ideologies that were pushed by groups like the KKK and other hate groups, you can almost set them on top of each other, and they mirror each other in the way that they divide and the way they demonize people by race. To introduce a program that will drive us backwards and apart to teach our students that the thoughts in their heads are automatically bad because of the color of their skin is absolutely ridiculous. And this is being driven by the Marxists who want to tear our country down and rebuild it in their image. Critical race theory also embraces the idea that there's more than two genders, and that children are capable of determining their identity at a young age. To deny this to a child would constitute as being racist and endangering their child's identity. Parents, please beware of the Comprehensive Sexuality Education Program. CRT is a dangerous and destructive indoctrination that is meant to destroy the family unit, Christianity, and our freedoms upheld within our Constitution. It is meant to destroy our nation through the Seven Pillars or Mountains: family, religion, business, education, media, government, arts and entertainment. You and I are in a battle to uphold the pillar of pre-K-12 education. This is a very dangerous political and cultural shift that is permeating all areas of our children's education as soon as they enter the doors of our schools, and it's eroding the rights of our parents to raise their children in the way they choose, whether it be building character, family morals, values, and being raised based on their religious or Christian biblical beliefs. If this political socialist view is not challenged and eradicated, it will ultimately destroy the freedoms in which many men and women before us have fought so valiantly. What can we do to stop this? The Board of Education, you can be the heroes from within. You have the power and influence as representatives to the taxpayers and residents who voted for you. You do not need to serve public or special interest groups. The New York State Ed Department has rolled out its expectation that all school districts will develop policies that advance this idea, as stated in lines 204, 205 of their framework and publication, "New York Schools: A Call to Action." Teachers, you have a voice. Don't be afraid. I'm sure some of you are closing your doors.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I need to remind you that there's a three-minute time limit, and that you've reached it.
Let me just finish then, that in the, thank you very much. I'm sure some of you are just closing your door. I urge you to continue to teach with passion and compassion. Teach that build children up and build character, and motivate students to succeed and be proud of who they are, no matter the color of their skin. Stay true to who you are and why you chose this profession. Choose to be one of the courageous. Parents, you must protect your children. Please be involved. Please speak out. Do not feel helpless. We have the power. We have the ability to speak up. Take the action. Be vigilant of what your kids are looking at in school, at home, on their device, in the resources, in all of the materials. It has inseminated every part of the curriculum and our daily life. You are their protectors. And reclaim the rainbow. Teach them about the science behind the rainbow. Teach them to be inclusive, but that we also have a rainbow, not just for scientific purposes, but that God put that rainbow there. It is His covenant to us. In the last 10 to 15 years, while we worked, slept, and enjoyed life, the fascist socialists and the Marxists, call them whatever you may, have begun to take over this last pillar of our society, and that is our family, by way of higher education and now in our public school system. So wake up, Webster. Wake up, parents. Don't go down without a fight, or making the, we are making a sacrifice for this next generation. Our children are depending on all of you and all of us sitting behind me and those who are listening in. Please share this video with neighbors, friends, family. We need to get the word out. Our children are depending on you. Be strong. Be courageous. Raise your voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Seewick.
Is it okay if I stand here?
It's completely okay. You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jason Seewick. I requested time to speak this evening as a father of three kids in first, sixth, and eighth grades. During the May 6 board meeting, President Geraschke addressed parents wanting to speak at the meeting. She outlined there's a policy for speaking and said, "We are welcome to email or call, but none of those options are ever used." That is false. I wrote multiple emails to the board over the last few months and never got a response. However, I was notified on LinkedIn that Mike Alt looked at my profile after one of my emails. Hey, Mike, I'm Jason. Nice to meet you. Mr. Camina's profile on LinkedIn says he's still the superintendent here. You may want to talk to him about that. It wasn't until my email to the board on April 29, which I also shared on social media, that I finally got a response. My perception is that President Geraschke is more worried about Facebook than she is about actual emails from parents like me. The response resulted in a positive phone call between President Geraschke, interim Superintendent Neenan, Brian Freeman, and myself. It was productive and appropriate. For the first time, my questions were addressed verbally and in writing. I learned that according to President Geraschke, she believed 90% of the faculty and staff at Webster were vaccinated. Mr. Neenan shared the weekly positivity rate of school COVID testing was about 0.5% each week going back to January. In light of that information, I wrote a follow-up email on May 18, and I asked two questions that you still haven't responded to. Do you believe the daily health checks are obsolete, or why are we still doing daily health checks? Should I post those on social media to get a response? So far, all I found on social media is parents voicing their concerns about the failure to reopen schools, former Superintendent Camina, and the curriculum. During the May 6 meeting, as parents demanded to speak, the police were called. I see you here tonight. Thank you for your service. There was another statement that struck, that stuck out from President Geraschke. She said, "We are not prepared for this. This is not the way it's going to go down. It can't. We are not prepared for this." When I started writing the board and former Superintendent Camina back in March, I wanted to know why Webster could not return to school and why Webster needed 10 weeks to prepare for reopening while other districts were doing it in March. Webster was not prepared for this. Over 30 hours of board meetings, I've watched them all during the school year. We heard the reasons why we can't open schools: the CDC red zone, the six-foot rule, New York State Department of Health, Monroe County Health Department, cohorting. During those 30 hours of board meetings, not one single member of this board spoke up and asked a question as to why we can't reopen schools. That's embarrassing. The board never responded to my emails, but former Superintendent Camina did. I could tell on the first phone call that he was trying to placate me with empty promises. He told me he was going to submit reopening plans to the state over March spring break. After spring break, I asked him if he submitted a reopening plan to the state. He told me, "We decided not to because we know the state would not approve it. We didn't even try." What I'm really hearing is Webster was not prepared. Another thing happened on that May 6 board meeting that shocked me. For the first time in 30 hours of board meetings, a member of this board actually spoke up. I want to applaud board member Richardson for finding a solution to a problem. She motioned to amend the agenda to allow us speakers and diffuse the situation that President Geraschke was not prepared for. For months, you started every meeting For months, you've started every meeting with a statement about misinformation and how you understand our frustration. I want to know what the misinformation is. I want to learn. The truth is, I don't think you can possibly understand how frustrated we are. How many people here tonight have kids currently enrolled in Webster? Raise your hands. Anybody on the board? Two. You might understand. I'm frustrated when my kids come home with headaches after wearing masks for eight hours. It happens every week. I'm frustrated when my first grader has three recesses a day and he has to wear a mask outside. I'm frustrated he's coming home from school saying he doesn't like school anymore, and the kid's smart. It's emotionally, physically, psychologically draining for a seven-year-old to wear a mask all day. I'm frustrated I don't know what my kids miss this year and how it will impact them down the road in high school or college, and I'm frustrated with what appears to be a very toxic culture within Webster. But most of all, I'm frustrated with that all of our resources, our gigantic budget, our big fancy buildings, all our super smart people, the best we could do was get our kids in school two days a week. Webster never prepared. Look, I know the board cannot change policy on reopening or mask mandates, but I think what you fail to understand is that we're all here tonight because you are the governing body of our school district. You were elected to be our advocates. You have a big voice for one of the largest districts in the area. My perception is that you're not using that voice. Sending a letter in June is nice, but where were you in March, or January, or even September last year? Finally, the Board of Election... Board of Education election was held on May 18th. We're going to have two new board members sitting here next month. You probably weren't prepared for that either. I don't bring up the curriculum or federal civil suit because I wanted to focus on my perception of this board and the failure of the board to advocate for me and communicate with me, and I presume hundreds of other parents. Those issues I'm concerned with. They've created trust issues here at Webster. The board has work to do to repair that trust that I blindly gave for the last nine years. You all signed the Board Governing Mission and Communication Statement. One of those... On those statements, there's four points where I believe the board failed. Values and promotes positive and productive relations in the community. Takes accountability for its own performance as a governing body. Practices the highest level of ethics and integrity and awareness of public and human relations is critical. Ignoring parents, blaming misinformation on social media is not productive, nor does it promote positive relations. There's seven of you sitting here. Take the time to actually talk to people like me. Stalking parents on LinkedIn, sending cease and desist letters to parents, jeopardizing board candidates livelihood by threatening their employer, these are examples of a complete lack of awareness of public and human relations. Why don't we set up a town hall meeting where we can ask questions and get answers in public? Maybe the PTSA... I think the PTSA is the place for that, but I have no interest in doing anything with them since they canceled the father-daughter dance. All of you are accountable for the toxic culture that developed under former Superintendent Camina. You hired him, you supervised him, you managed him. He's literally your only employee. I find it hard to believe that none of you knew what was going on here, but we're going to know the truth one day. Accountability is a hard look in the mirror, admitting you made mistakes and learning from those mistakes. I do it all the time. I make lots of mistakes. My perception is you haven't taken that hard look in the mirror yet, and now you're tasked with hiring a new superintendent. I don't trust you to make that decision. Ethics and integrity. The entire board should go spend time with Mr. Graff. Our very own State Road physical education teacher has instilled the definition of integrity in every kid that walks through his gym. My seven-year-old knows that integrity is doing the right thing when nobody's watching. The things I have heard from actually talking to parents, teachers, former teachers, and staff, not reading crap on social media. Former Superintendent Camina was picking winners and losers in our district while you sat by and watched. You should remove that point from your board governing mission because I think it's a lie. Mr. Neenan, I am encouraged by your comments in last week's board meeting about reopening. For the first time ever, I heard somebody in a leadership position use the words "get creative." I loved it. You're letting... You're getting the job interview of a lifetime right now, and I do honestly recognize your efforts. Instead of hearing "we were not prepared for this," you're hitting grand slams talking about how over-prepared you will be for anything that comes our way. I appreciate that. You're saying the right things, but I also need to see some action. I want to hear about the plans and the backup plans. The goal is full-time mask-free school this fall. Anything short of that... Anything short of that, and I'm considering it a failure. Everyone here should consider the results of this board election, a referendum on the board's lack of communication, lack of transparency, lack of accountability, and complete failure in your leadership. The toxic culture that developed under your watch with former Superintendent Camina is your responsibility. The federal civil suit is your responsibility, and advocating for parents like me is your responsibility. I am willing to help you. All you need to do is call. You have my number. Thank you.
Mark Agar?
Don't really have much to say. The biggest thing that I've got to say right now is just that the letter that you guys sent out to Gilibrand and Schumer, I mean, we're past sending letters. Like, letters just are not going to... How many letters were sent to you guys and you just sit there and ignore it? It does not... It's not going to work. And like I said, you guys are either going to become our target and fight with us, or you're going to fight against us. People are organizing from other towns, and I'm telling you right now, like, you need to let us continually speak. You need to open up and have a town hall, because I'm telling you, like, I'm not normally cordial, and I'm calling myself cordial right now. I am ready to pop. And I... Like, that police officer back there will probably know me, and I don't want that to happen. Okay? And I'm not like, no threat, okay? But this needs to change, and you guys need to stand up for our kids. And stop... Stop this. You have to stand up for our kids. I'm sending three kids out of my five to public schools because you have all failed. You're not standing up for us. Do it! So, and it's... That's all I got to say, but I just think we need your support. I don't want to fight you. I want to fight with you, and you're not doing it. Thank you.
Lena Cole?
My name is Lena Cole. I'm a mother, grandmother, registered nurse, and veteran. I'm coming to the board to speak about several concerns. My first concern is with the lack of transparency in our curriculum. How is the curriculum being taught? What resources are being used to teach this curriculum? What is the curriculum in detail, not just in the posted summaries? Last meeting, Tammy spoke to the liabilities that the schools will have if they do not follow New York State guidelines. My second concern, and I ask, was why must we follow these guidelines if they're not based on facts and science? Why are we not in a position to disregard the guidelines when they are proving to not be effective? Parents are trusting authority figures by blind faith? Who is really liable or standing for our precious kids? Parents are having to deal with the byproduct of what the following these guidelines that don't work have done to our children. Science, there's plenty of scientific data out there with... and proving and showing all the harmful effects. The CDC is creating recommendations and guidelines when they are major stockholders in the COVID-19 vaccine. This is a conflict of interest. They should be challenged, and I ask, where has our common sense gone? I beseech our school boards to advocate for our children and yourselves. Our four founding fathers and American soldiers fought and died for our freedoms and rights, and we, the people, should not be censored or shut down when we stand against medical tyranny that is slowly infiltrating our schools and places of employment. We need not live in fear, and please do not listen to mainstream media. Federal law protects against mask mandates, PCR testing, and any EUA product. Remove your masks. They're not healthy. They're not helping. Our schools are run by educated people that are supposed to be advocating for our children and leading, elected to protect, guide, and teach. We are trusting in you. These guidelines and unnecessary unlawful mandates are instituting a false fear, not uplifting strength, knowledge, or truth. My third concern is about how we need to stand on and integrate what our history and Constitution was originally founded on, and to teach and train our teachers in that instead of the slow demise of our children's minds with the ideology of the euphemistic diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is the critical race theory that only supports the degradation of our freedom and constitutional and moral fabric that this country was founded on. I urge you, the board, we need you to wake up and snap out of the haze, stand strong for truth against whomever is opposing it. We need to all stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to ask to take place if the person didn't show.
Okay. That's okay. Please go ahead. Thank you. That way, I don't have to wait till 8:30, and you guys can get out a little earlier, too. The good news is, I timed mine. It's about 3 minutes and 10 seconds. I'm going to start by reading you something that I wrote about my daughter. I'd estimate that my daughter spent an entire year of her 18 on this planet, walking backwards and conducting to the music around her. On the off chance there was no music playing, she conducted to the music in her head. I'd ask her, "Conducting to the music in your head again? Watch where you're walking. You're about to squish the cat." She's a shy kid. She doesn't even like being called on in class. This is a diametric opposition to the very same kid whose deepest desire it was to be drum major of the Webster marching band. So when the shy kid auditioned and got the part, the first time she performed, the thrill was as much ours as it was hers. We spent four exhausting, exhilarating, expensive years living the rituals of a band season: the home game performances, the life-size banners of senior portraits plastered to the fence of the Schrader football field, the last inside joke, the last year-end banquet, the final thank-you speeches. She got a senior year this year by default. She had a senior recognition ceremony this year by default. At the conclusion of this year's season, which was socially distant and measured in mere minutes of actual music, she fist bumped a few bandmates. She is safe from COVID, whatever that means. But mostly, she's grieving, lonely, and a little bit sad. A few fist bumps, no fanfare, no traditions, no closure. She looked around in the darkening, almost empty Schrader parking lot that last rehearsal. She stared down at her shoes and silently walked to the car. She sobbed. I did, too. I posted a longer version of the story on social media in the days that followed. There was messages and responses of empathy and understanding, even from strangers. Even if they didn't know my child, they saw the same heartbreak in their own. The complete story can be found in a November email that I sent to the superintendent and all seven of you board members. I received not a single response. My message tonight is this: The parents and community members did not elect you to represent us with your opinions. We elected you to represent ours. We did not elect you to sell this community, the policies delivered on high from NISAID. NISAID, the CDC, the Department of Health. We elected you to advocate for us to them. To do that means to have to listen to our concerns and advocate to those ends, even when it's not comfortable. In the fall, I anticipate a full return to school for all students, full-time, mask optional, no social distancing, no punitive policies for the unvaccinated, no vaccine mandate. Let me say that again. I can't believe I have to tell you that or ask for that. No vaccine mandate. Thank you. Thank you.
So I was here last week, and you've heard a lot of what I had to say. My question tonight is, the elementary kids last week at Plain South, they ran the mile on an 85-degree day with masks on. And I want to know if any of you have a problem with that? If any of the principals or vice principals have a problem with that? Because if you don't, then you're part of the problem. And if you do, then you're part of the problem. Because you're standing by and watching the abuse happen and turning your head because you don't want to get involved. I know of two of your school nurses who will resign in the fall if you continue to enforce masking or enforce a forced vaccine. And how brave of them. It's so touching to see someone, anyone, standing up for these kids. They are willing to walk away from their jobs because they have seen enough. I know that field day is coming up, outdoor activity, lots of running around, and it's going to be 90 degrees. Will you be enforcing masks outside for these kids? Victor School sent out a letter that they will no longer be enforcing masks outside for gym and recess. Will Webster follow? Or do you need permission? When we spoke on the phone last week, you mentioned some kind of waiver that parents could sign, that they could take the risk for their kids being unmasked and unvaccinated. I know that you can't enact that on your own, but you can make it a discussion. You can get other superintendents to agree, and you can start being an advocate. I'm sure you're aware of all the lawsuits going on against area districts and statewide. Webster is no exception, and they are on it. Are you aware that masking kids during this pandemic falls under the emergency use authorization? That masking is experimental because there is no evidence to support that it halts transmission? What it does do is causes anxiety, fear, stress, and potential long-term effects of neurological damage due to prolonged oxygen deprivation. The FDA's guidance on EUA of medical products requires the FDA to, quote, "ensure that recipients are informed to the extent practicable given the applicable circumstances," that they have the option to accept or refuse the EUA product, end quote. Are you aware of this statement? Have you informed all students that they have the option to refuse? The United States Code of Federal Regulations and the FDA require the informed consent of human subjects for medical research. The EUA COVID-19 products, including masks, are unapproved, unlicensed, investigational products that are all in their experimental stage. It's unlawful to conduct medical research on a human being, even in the event of an emergency, unless steps are taken to secure the informed consent of all participants. Are you aware of this? We do not consent to take the masks off our kids.
Moving on. Moving on to the Oak Tree Celebration. Every year, it's a partnership between PTSA and WTA, parents nominated teacher who they believe has gone above and beyond for students, and those teachers are recognized each year with the Oak Tree Award. Today, we have Wendy Sardella, who has represented and worked on behalf of this award for years. Everyone who would like to be a part of this, please come forward and take the seats behind, and we'll introduce the recipients and allow people to say a few words. Everybody comfortable. Okay, thank you. Wendy, I'll let you take over and do the presentation.
Thank you. I heard a very nice intro to this. Every year since 2001...
Wendy, Wendy, hold on just a second. Is your microphone on?
It's got a beautiful green light. I'm sorry.
There is a green light, yes.
It is. Sally, sit a little closer. Okay. I didn't want to eat the microphone there. So every year since 2001, the Oak Tree recognition has been awarded to one elementary teacher and one secondary teacher, and this is a joint, it's a joint effort of both the Webster Teachers Association and the Webster Parent Teacher Student Association. And I'm very pleased to announce that this year's recipients are Jennifer Heefe and Stephanie Metz Miller. If I can take a few minutes to talk about each one, I have a fairly extensive biography of both. I'm going to excerpt it for everyone's sake at this point, because I think that people would like to see a little bit of what's left of the daylight when they get home. So I'm going to start with Jennifer Heefe. She is this year's elementary recipient. Jennifer has been teaching for 29 years, all of them in Webster. She has actively served on many committees, attends conferences, and has been active in the WTA in a variety of roles. Last year, she established a women's committee in Webster, which she chairs. Jennifer Heefe is a National Board Certified Teacher, a National Geographic Certified Educator, and she actively pursues new learning opportunities. She understands how strong reading and writing skills equip students for learning. Jennifer monitors all students and reports progress to parents, sharing enriching opportunities, and definitely differentiating and bringing parents into the conversation with constant updates. It is said of Mrs. Heefe that she understands how strong writing skills benefit students by equipping them with communication and thinking skills. Her focus on reading and writing create a love for writing, and she goes above and beyond to ensure her students receive the best education she can provide. We are so lucky to have her teaching in our district. She is dedicated to teaching with integrity and stands as a shining example of leadership for our children. Our secondary recipient is Stephanie Metz Miller. Stephanie has taught every level of physics and helped initiate new courses, including optics and photonics. Students and colleagues describe Mrs. Metz Miller as collaborative, professional, and dedicated to her students because she makes science engaging. She was nominated by Haley Bolton, who said, "She is the best and makes such a hard subject so easy to understand." I enjoy every day coming to her class as a sophomore, and now again this year. "Her class is the best way to start my day." Stephanie Metz Miller continues to improve her knowledge and teaching. She works hard for the success of her students. She collaborates professionally at the local, national, and international levels. Most recently, she was selected to attend the International Teachers' Workshop at CERN, the particle collider in Switzerland, last summer. Although it was put on hold, the recognition from outside academic groups speaks volumes to her academic background. And I would like everyone to take a look at just a representative sampling of just some of the great teachers in this district. We had 30 different teachers nominated, over, I believe, 46 nominations. This was our first year nominating by Google Form, and I think some people didn't trust it, so they put in several repeated nominations for some people. And so that was, it was a great experience to be part of that, and we know that every time we see the documentation that comes in on teachers, we're going to be wowed, we're going to be humbled, we're going to be brought to tears. So, thank you for allowing us a few moments of your time.
Thank you, and congratulations. We're so glad that you could be here, and this can be televised, to share with the wider community so that they're able to be able to congratulate you as well. Thank you so much for all you do.
And I would add, hold on. And I would add to that as well. First of all, thank you to WTA and PTSA for this outstanding event every year, and to Stephanie, to Jen, you guys are wonderful recipients of that, and congratulations to both of you. It's always great to win an award that you're nominated for, so well done, both of you. And to Wendy and Lisa, thank you for organizing. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know you wanted to extend your personal congratulations, so next on the agenda is the report from the interim superintendent.
Thank you very much, and yeah, thank you for letting me have that ten minutes there. Okay, so first thing I wanted to say, I think a few people have left, and tomorrow, all Monroe County superintendents will be sending out to their communities a copy of the letter that as a group we have written and we're sending to the governor, asking him to consider a myriad of reopening items to ensure a successful, full reopening in the fall. Please be on the lookout for that. There are some things that I think that we've talked about in this room. We've talked about as a board that we are definitely advocating for, and I think that the community will be pleased with many of those advocating items. All right, second, we wanted to share some exciting news for our youngest learners. With the passing of the New York State's budget, additional funding has been allocated to all districts to expand universal pre-kindergarten programs. And in Webster, that funding will allow us to have a total of 13 classes be dedicated to the UPK program. The program will be housed in all seven of the district's elementary schools, plus childcare partners, Kids First, and Doodle Bugs. There is no cost to attend this program. More student spaces are also available, and families may apply now by visiting the news story on our website, websterschools.org. Next, I'm going to move on to the segment that I started last week that I'm going to continue, I think, is Webster Campus News. And so this week, I received a terrific email from Plank South Principal, Mrs. Sullivan. I believe she was here, and she might have had to step out, but I know she was here at some point. But thanks for sending this email. And again, it was recently celebrating her students' reading achievements, among so many other highlights. This year, the building also identified students who started the year reading one grade level below, and there was more than 30 students that were in this situation. They experienced tremendous growth this year in reading, thanks to their teachers and the support of their parents. She was happy to report that all are now reading on grade level, at the grade level standards, which is an outstanding celebration. Thank you to our teachers and parents who continue to be true partners in their children's education. You can also see two proud trophy winners up there on the board from Plank South Annual Science Fair that was held virtually this spring and featured about 80 students who participated and excelled in this much anticipated event. Battle of the Books was also a hit again this year. And thanks again to Mrs. Sullivan for highlighting these exciting news stories from our Plank South Eagles. Our Webster Schrader and Webster Thomas seniors are anticipating many events that we've heard from tonight, from our WTA rep, and also from Joni, and also from our students at Schrader, Brooke, and Michael. Thanks again for them coming tonight. One of the things that I wanted to highlight outside of them is some of the things that they did was we had our SUMA breakfast at Schrader this morning, and our SUMA breakfast for Thomas is actually next week. What a great event. I had a chance to stop by there this morning and really enjoy seeing our students and all the amazing accomplishments that they've had. And lastly, but certainly not least, on Wednesday, June 16th, our seniors will have their graduation ceremony on Webster Schrader's football field, or, no, excuse me, our athletic field, our stadium field, that's what we call that, and then also on Thomas's stadium field on the 24th. And both ceremonies will be livestreamed on each school webpage via our district website. Stay tuned for that, and we will be sharing more exciting information around that. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much. Now, moving on, Mike Suffaletto and Sue Casey have served this district collectively for 37 years. Their accomplishments are vast and will leave an imprint long after that they move on and into the other endeavors of life that will lead them to. I know there's a few people here who wish to share some congratulatory remarks to Mike and Sue. Sheri and Becky, if you'd like to come forward, please do. They both have left indelible marks on this district. Mike with his, the art of teaching and his leadership and what he's taught all of us here, and Sue, of course, with her background in policy, have been tremendous assets. So we welcome Sheri Johnson from Monroe County School Board Association, Executive Director, and Becky Schultz along with her. Thank you, ladies.
Hi, you two. So I'm going to begin with Sue, and I was told to be short, so I'm going to be short. I know I got to see both of you at the annual meeting, and so Becky said, well, we'll just collaborate on one piece and share it out. So Sue, I'll begin with you, because you and I began our board careers in the same year. I did the math. My sons were 11 and 14, and now, like your children, they're grown with children of their own. My two grandchildren are attending the same district my kids went to that I was on the board for, but my other two will be coming here, the first one this fall. And it is because my sons believe that this district is the kind of district that they had their own education in, that they will receive, their children will receive a quality education, and that these districts are well-run. During your time, Sue, you made countless contributions to the success of this district, but beyond that, it's just been such a pleasure to work with you during our time together at MCSBA, through professional development, all of our advocacy during your time as Association President. Leadership comes in many forms, and yours has been with a quiet grace, but steadfast commitment to both public education in general and specifically to those who attend and work in this district. I know that our connection will not be lost, and neither will your advocacy for this district and public education for all kids. So we thank you. Mike, you served us as president for not one year, but two years in a row. On top of your leadership duties at the time here in Webster, I know that while you remain an ardent advocate for education, your heart needs to rest, that you've been able to do the work you have and make contributions that will remain is a true testament to the will that you carry inside of you. We will find ways for you to do what you want to do and still desire to do in a less stressful, more heart-friendly way, I promise you. But we will miss your kindness, your sense of humor, and your incredible passion at our regular meetings. So rest easy, my friend. So what I did is I went back and I copied your very first news scopes, that first column that you wrote the very first year that you were Association President. So, Mike, you have two. In those, you both talked about change, about nurturing leadership and the value of public education, and you have inspired countless other board members and leaders. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, ladies. You have extremely busy lives, and it was important for you to be able to be here and bid farewell to our two longstanding board members. Thank you so much for being here. We also have a couple other individuals who wish to share a few words. Kyle Suffaletto and Larry Wall, if you would please join us in the front.
Hey, Dad. So there's a poem I read every year with my APVIT students. It's Robert Hayden's "Those Winter Sundays." And it goes, "Sundays, too, my father got up early and put his clothes on in the blue-black cold. Then with cracked hands that ached from labor and the weekday weather made banked fires blaze. No one ever thanked him. I'd wake and hear the cold splintering, breaking. When the rooms were warm, he'd call, and slowly I would rise and dress, fearing the chronic angers of that house, speaking indifferently to him, who had driven out the cold and polished my good shoes as well. What did I know? What did I know of love's austere and lonely offices?" So even though I'm an English teacher, I did some math, too, and I figured that if you add the 13 years of schooling I received from Webster Central School District to the 14 years I've worked for the district, you get 27 years in which the majority of my days were spent in Webster schools. Now, each year provided something unique in its own way, but there was always something constant, and that's you, my father. And for as long as I have been here at Webster Schools, you have been here, leading me, molding me, training me. So this moment, your last time, it's a little strange for me. And for whatever reason, I keep thinking of something you said when you retired from teaching. It was my very first year teaching at Webster, and it was your last year. I was helping you clean out your classroom at Willink because the new teacher hired you, or hired for your position was ready to get into the room. And I said something like, "Wait, we have to get everything out today?" And you said, do you remember? You said, "Don't ever think that just because you've worked for 30 years that you won't be replaced in 30 minutes." be replaced in 30 minutes." You remember? Now, you always excelled at putting me in my place, but I want to tell you tonight that you were wrong. Sure, school will fill an open position, it has to. Someone will take an open seat on the board, but that doesn't mean replacement. I mean, think about how long it's taken the Buffalo Bills to find replacement for Jim Kelly and Marv Levy. Now, in all my life, I've never really argued with you, because I learned pretty quick that doing so was always a losing battle for me one way or another. But I like this setup in which I have the mic and you have to sit silently. This is good for us. So I want you to know tonight that you were wrong. Of course, the show must go on, but the life work of a man cannot be replaced, at least not in 30 minutes. And I think, ever since I heard you say that, it motivated me. Your statement certainly can be true, but if it is, then that's our own fault. I have a hunch that we can't take anything with us when our time is up. I'm learning, though, that it's easier to move on to whatever our next destination is, whether in this life or the next, when you know what you're leaving behind. So even though old age should burn and rave at close of day, you, my father, can go in peace, knowing that I am behind you. I will continue the good work you began in me until it is finished. Like you, my life's work will be right here. And my hope is that, like you, if not more so, that I will be irreplaceable. So here's to you, my father, there on the sad height. Curse bless me now with your fierce tears, I pray. Do not go gentle into that good night. Rage, rage against the dying of the light. I'll see you Saturday.
I really can't follow that, but I'll try. Because of Sue, it is an honor to say thank you tonight to Sue Casey, on behalf of our Webster Central School District. For the last 24 years, you've offered your time and your talents in the service of Webster students, staff, and families. When one considers the normal time commitments of a school board member, evening meetings at least twice a month, school visits, PTSA meetings, required trainings with school board associations, and adds this to your 12 years as vice president, your two years as president, your committee work, your volunteer work with Monroe County School Boards Association, and multiplies this by 24 years, well, that's too much to add up, and it's time you could have spent on other things. Instead, you spent that time on all of our behalves, and for this, we owe you a debt of gratitude. Speaking of debt and of spending, you also shared your background in finance, working tirelessly over the years to ensure that Webster students graduate able to navigate the complex world of personal finance. The half-year course, Financial Literacy, is an assurance to us all that our students are well-equipped in this regard. Your real strengths, however, have to be your dual passions for policy and strategic planning. Policies make up the instruction manual for every organization, and anyone who has witnessed your zest for digging into the language of a complex policy to try and make it more clear knows that you recognize just how vital this often overlooked area of public service is. The experts define strategic planning as a disciplined effort to produce fundamental decisions. You've been a part of that effort here in Webster since its inception, and you've made sure that the discipline came in the form of truly seeking input from all stakeholders with no predetermined outcomes. I can recall an initiative several years ago to explore college career and community readiness of our students, and how the group of 50 or so people discovered together at that time that the most important piece for all three was social and emotional health. Our support of essential skills in every classroom arose from that work, and you were the one, as always, who made sure that the process was able to work in an authentic way. For your work on strategic planning and policy, for your commitment to financial literacy, but most of all, for your care, kindness, and hard work on our behalf, thank you.
Tammy, can I say a few words?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Kyle. I have spent almost a half-century dealing in one form or another with the education of Webster's youth, and I'm very proud of everything the Board of Education has accomplished while I have been a member. It was in this very building that I was hired by the administration of Ross Willink, Joe Clemshot, Jack Harton, and Dick Freed, and I thought they were a very, very good team. But this present administration, and I'll start with our board clerk, Cindy, and I'll move on to Brian, and Brian, and Dave, as well as our directors, and our communication team, hi back there, and our technology personnel, they're second to none. They make Webster a great place to work. Now, I've always thought of Maria as being an outstanding teacher, and I thought I did a few commendable things as well. But I think, Maria will agree with me when I say, I don't think that she or I could hold a candle to what her daughter and my son are doing in the classroom. It is our teachers that make Webster a great place to have your child educated. Literally and figuratively, I have a broken heart as I move on, and I hope for nothing but the best in Webster's future, and I thank all for allowing me this great opportunity for the past 40-plus years. So thank you all.
I want to thank the Webster community for the privilege of serving on the Board of Education. It's been a pleasure watching our students learn and grow, and I have the utmost confidence that they will turn into amazing leaders that will make great decisions for us. It's also been a pleasure getting to know many of you over the last 24 years, and I appreciate your dedication to public education and to our students, especially Janice, Mike Alt, Maria, Tammy, Linda, and Mike Suffaletto. Mike, you're a great board member, and you're a great advocate for students, and you're a great friend, and I appreciate that. I do wish the leadership team all the best. Brian, the board, the newcomers, Shawna and Jen, I know you'll have a challenging year, but I know it will be a rewarding year as well. And lastly, I'd like to wish all of the Webster students, each and every one of them, a bright and fulfilled future. Thank you, everybody.
We have something very lighthearted to share, because I'm not sure how we're going to say goodbye, but for now... Mike? I heard Brian was showing us something. We do have a friend from far away who has a few words for you. Yep?
You know, Mike and I go way back. In fact, Mike was the first person, you were the first person I ever met at a Monroe County School Boards Association meeting, and information exchange where we all get sent when we're rookies. And I think you were probably a year or two into your term, but it was great to see you and see your energy, and that's when we first got together, around 2010. We went from there to the Legislative Committee, and we really thrived. We did lobbying together in Albany, and then low and behold, we both became board presidents. Myself as president of what you called Webster South, and myself as president, or you as president is what we called Penfield North, and that was your terminology that you created. We had a lot of breakfast together, we talked about a lot of common issues, and, you know, you had so much experience that you went to me, which was great. And then, all of a sudden, we became officers at the Monroe County School Board Association, and, you know, we have Sue Casey to thank for that, I know Sue's in the room, and good or bad, we did our best, Sue, but I was president, and you became vice president, and, you know, I asked about five people first, and they turned me down, and then I got to you, but just kidding, just kidding. But we had a great, great go of it, and every discussion that you led, either place, always centered on the best interest of your kids, and that was, that was the best thing. And even when we were at basketball games between our two schools, we talked about that. And, you know, leadership was a big part of what you do, so even after your first incident, I think you were so focused, and we still laugh, we laughed about Mark Vukanovich sending you the box of Omaha Steaks, and we didn't know, you know, if it was your heart or whatever, and Mark thought that was a good thing, and we're like, what are you, crazy? You sent the guy steaks? So, but it's your time to go over the wall, as we say in the business. I did it, you're doing it, you're doing it mostly of your own choice, and I think that's fantastic. And, you know, I hope the leadership trend, you've given almost 50 years to your school district between teaching and otherwise, and I hope that can continue with the other board members, and, you know, things are, things are critical these days, and I know it'll be hard to follow up after you, but I think it will happen. So I hope to catch up with you when I come up north, maybe we can have lunch with Sherry, and, you know, I'm glad to see you on your feet, but taking it easy or going over the wall, as I've said in our business, we're out, and there is life after school boards, I'll tell you that. So congratulations again on a great career, and I'm glad you're being honored tonight, and as I've always said, hopefully you can keep the wind at your back. So congratulations and enjoy. Take care.
And thank you, everyone, for speaking on the behalf of two amazing people, also two amazing board members, so Sue and Mike. I know Larry and Kyle, you said it all, you summed it up in so many ways of the accomplishments that you guys have had, but again, going back to the people that you are, you guys are amazing, you know, family members and whatnot, too, that have always been role models for us. So thank you guys so much for everything you've done and everything you've brought to our district and our kids.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, back to business here. We have a bond resolution. Brian, if you'd like to walk us through that, it does require a roll call vote that we'll all participate in.
Yep, we need a roll call vote, because this is binding the district to borrowing for the buses that were, proposition that was recently passed. So we'll do the roll call vote for the approval, for me to go ahead and execute the borrowing so we could get our new buses this summer.
Okay, and Cindy will do that. Thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion in a second, please?
Can we have a motion, please, to accept the bond, okay? Suff, a second. Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, the bond resolution.
And we'll go one by one.
One by one.
Okay, Tammy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike Alt?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Mike Suff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have the Webster Central School District Safety Plan, and Neil Flood has joined us this evening, as he has for a couple evenings lately, and we appreciate your presence and your, and your leadership. Thank you.
It certainly is entertaining, to be here, to say the least. Sue and Mike, I just wanted to take a second to thank you for your support of the security operation over the years that hasn't gone unnoticed, so thank you. I certainly don't need 15 minutes to talk about the plan. As most of you know, the plan really hasn't changed from this year to last year. The district plan is a public document. The building-level plans are confidential documents that we file with the state. This plan is on the website. We will put the new SRO agreement in it when we get it from the town. I spoke to them yesterday, and they're fine with it, they just need to be signatories, and we do, and then we'll include that in the plan. We also will include the pandemic plan information, the board's already approved, when we put it back up on the website. So there's really no changes to the district-wide plan. I don't think we need to make any. It's reasonably comprehensive, I know most of you have read it, so that's pretty much all I have. I know we need, I think, to do a five-minute public hearing as part of the process, so whenever you want to start that clock, it's fine with me.
An annual review. Does anybody have any questions that you'd like to ask?
So Neil, just a question, are there elements of the plan that we actually drill or practice, like lockdown?
So the state requires us to conduct eight fire drills and four lockdown drills at every school every year as a requirement. So we do practice those, yes. This year, it's obviously been a little challenging with mixed scheduling, but we do practice those. We have to. And then we have to report to the state the actual dates that we do those as part of the information I provide over the summer.
Thank you.
Sure.
This opens the 30-day window for comments.
Right.
This is just the kickoff, so we'll be back with the finalized plan at the reorg meeting in early July, and then we'll send that final plan on to the state.
Yeah, what happens is the plan goes on the website, and we actually just provide the state the link, and they will actually go and look at it. Last year, they actually looked at it and called the district about it, so they were very positive with our SRO program especially, so kudos to Dave and Matt for their work in the schools.
Does anyone else have any comments or feedback? It is a great read. It really is. You can't read it at night, because you won't sleep, but it is a very comprehensive and well-thought-out, well-researched plan, and we're grateful for all the effort that goes into that, as well as the efforts of the SROs. We're, as a district, very fortunate to have their service. You know, they mean a great deal to the students as well, which is a key part of that relationship. Anything further?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to take away from the board, but I just want to recognize Dr. Flood here, Mr. Flood, and our SROs are here tonight as well. Thank you guys very, very much for everything that you do. I will absolutely take you guys over, any day of the week, you guys are fantastic, and you do keep us, we are so pleased and honored to be able to have such a great security team that we have across the district. Thanks, Neil. Thank you very much, Dave and Matt. And team, I know some, a couple others, I can't see them all right now.
Thank you very much. Having heard that, can we have a motion, please, to accept the WCSD safety plan? Having heard that, can we have a motion, please, to accept the WCSD safety plan? So moved by Mike. Second, Maria. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much for your time and for being here this evening.
Thanks, folks.
We appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the second reading of the draft of the Board of Education calendar. And what we'd like to do is table any approval of the second reading to make sure that we were entertaining perhaps a different evening, we're entertaining the feedback of our two new board members, and want to make sure that what we do involves everyone and that we're all comfortable with that decision. The calendar dates generally involve a workshop and a business meeting at each month. And then, of course, that's all public. So with, with that in mind, we'd like to reconvene and revisit our plan, update it once we've had a chance to meet together. Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda are the board reports. It's been a little... Oh. Policy. I don't, what was I thinking?
Our last policy.
The second reading of the policy, 3180 Family Medical Leave.
Yes, yes. This is the, the second read of the family, family medical leave policy. And as I said last time, really just an effort to streamline our policies, make them shorter and more concise, and put the regulation part in the regulation manual as opposed to having it in the policy manual. And there wasn't any questions the first go-round, so I think we can just take it to a vote unless there's any new questions. No?
Okay, yeah, fairly straightforward. Can we have a motion, please, to accept the second reading of policy 3180? Maria, second by Sue. All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to...
Policy. Policy. Proud.
Moving on to our board reports, we have our school liaison reports. And I believe, you know, we... Absolutely.
It's on. Would I be out of line to ask that we table or suspend the reports tonight? Just for the benefit of all?
In the interest of time?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, is that, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but... I worked a long time on my three, my four reports, but I'm willing to forego it at this point. I don't know, it's up to you.
I think in the interest of time, if that's okay with everyone, we can find a different way to share that information. The board reports as well. That's okay. That's okay, respectfully.
Can we just send them to Cindy and put them in the... Okay.
So then we would be entertaining a motion to amend the agenda and submit the reports at a later date. Okay. And can I have a motion, please, to do so?
I'll make it.
Maria, in a second. Mike Alt, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that leaves on our agenda the consent agenda. Superintendent approval of minutes, personnel actions, recommendations of the Committee on Special Education, and some co-op bids. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
I can't see.
Mike, in a second?
Second.
Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, motion carries. And with that, can we have a motion, please, to adjourn?
I will make that motion to adjourn.
Sue, in a second by Mike. Appropriate. Thank you, all in favor. Have a good evening, everyone, and thank you.